Yes, I'm working two jobs, so I'm doing it with lots of different which is downfall like rings and leather man jackets and stuff some in all the schools in the area. So there's ten of them. Hey, how are you? Good. So I'm in those a lot during the day and then real soon I'm trying to get that going. Doing that afternoon and evening. Yeah, so trying, trying, it feels good.
Okay, welcome everybody to the City Villarica Planning Commission for the October 2nd meeting. This is the call to order. And first up is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt this agenda? We, yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve this agenda. All those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries four zero. First up is old business. Everybody's got a copy of your minutes here?
Yeah.
Okay, here we go.
I've had a chance to look at them. During the change I would call to your attention is the spelling of my name. It's spelled right up here. But no approval of the other minutes.
Okay. Have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up is new business, the comprehensive plan update.
Alright, let me fly in planning and zoning specialists for City Villarica. Um, so as y'all know, we have been under a process of updating our comprehensive plan since about December of last year. So, um, start with the purpose of the plan itself, which has been online on the network and we're all getting copies once we have it adopted and accepted by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Um, but the plan represents the growth and development policy for the city expressed by our future development cap and supporting goals. Um, itself needs to meet the requirements, intent requirements of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs as they set the standards for local planning, um, established March 2014. Um, and the preparation of our comprehensive plan update in accordance with the DCA standards allows us to remain eligible for state assistance programs. So that's anytime that the state is offering loans or grants, we have to maintain that qualified location status in order to be eligible to even apply. And so this is, this and service delivery strategy as well as the voting, all contribute to maintaining that status. Um, so the scope of our work with our plan was to address economic development, housing, natural and historic resources, land use and development patterns, and community revitalization. Um, in developing the plan, as I said, we started in December 2017 with a kickoff meeting after we had selected the contractor for the firm that will help put together the plan. We had a kickoff meeting with City Council describing the process and public involvement opportunities. April 2018, we did a vision and workshop at Goldust where the participants, people and the citizens got to participate in polarization exercises, facilitated discussion and one-on-one conversations with the planning team. June 2018, we have a land use charrette where people were able to engage, um, placing stickers where they thought certain future development patterns should be in the city, um, which ultimately led us to create policy and, and this, and this map. August 2018 was our open house where we presented a draft of all the goals and elements of the plan as well as the future language map, traditional development map, um, as well as some other things. Our consultant team also presented the, a concept of the downtown master plan as far as, um, some improvements that will help the circulation throughout downtown as well as aesthetic enhancements. Uh, we also had, uh, that gained input through steering committee, met four times, a twelve-member body, um, that helped steer us throughout this process and we had confessionals, um, from real estate, from schools, from banking, from Tanner, from the planning zone commission and City Council, um, throughout that process. And we also had a, um, online survey which, um, we got over six hundred responses from, um, flyers, email blasts, and a web, uh, webpage. And, um, our consultant team also attended a rise and shine meeting, um, for the downtown develop, for the development authority.
That's downtown developer's authority, yeah.
So, um, what you'll see, what you've seen online, if you've had a chance to take a look at it, is plans organized into an executive summary, introduction, community vision, future development guide, implementation program, and appendices. The bulk of the document is the appendices which has, um, you know, kind of all the data collection that went throughout the process. Um, a lot of the numbers and figures, that's where that information is. Um, but we can start with the, the community vision, um, the vision themes are organized as those are strategies, um, and the three things that came out of the vision in session were development patterns, resource conservation, and social and economic development. So that's how the plan is, the update is kind of framed. Um, so our development patterns, what people wanted to see is to maintain the small town character, preserve open space, improve multimodal connectivity, people want to support our mixed uses, um, enhance design standards. But as far as resource conservation, protection of our water resources, protection of our existing natural resources, historical and cultural resources. For social and economic development, um, people want to stimulate revitalization activities and redevelopment of aging properties. Um, to me that says infill development, so corridors and areas where we've had previous development, um, that kind of may have been, may be disrepair at this point, that still has good bones, that's where we should, um, in a way focus, focus on development. Um, create opportunity, employment opportunities within the city and expand the business diversity, more jobs, better jobs for, for our citizens. Um, maintain high quality services for the citizens of Villarica, enhance communication and coordination between various local and state agencies. So next we come to our future development guide, which, um, really gives you more context about the map that you see in front of you. I don't know if you guys have seen this before, the character areas, Drayak kind of that talks about.
Thank you.
That, um, goes over what these new, what this new map is. So what this map will do is replace our future language map that we had that, that really, um, really kind of serves as an existing use map. It doesn't, doesn't break us out in detail as far as, um, you know, it doesn't really complement what, what the vision, the vision is now for, for the city. Uh, what you see here is that there's a boundary line for the city, and all of the future languages within there are ones that are in the city limit. So then this, and they're kind of a darker shade. And you'll see that we have an urban growth boundary of where we'd like to go in the future. Um, there's not much growth on the Glen County side, it's more so we're focusing on the Carroll County side for growth and expansion. So, um, to go through the character areas, the first is conservation and green space. Um, and that's basically, um, everywhere green is public and family, um, a lot of our parks are going to be green, um, but this is places where, um, we do not want to see the building, or we want to see it very limited. Um, so next is traditional neighborhood, and that's the darker yellow, and that's areas that have historically been a part of the city predating, um, some of the newer subdivisions that we have here. Um, so the characterized by moderate density, um, green spaces lots of provided in individual lots, the neighborhood, open spaces, park communities lots of been provided, pedestrian connectivity is moderate to high, or sidewalks may be internal, but not currently connected. So some of, some of our older bones are connected, some of our residential areas are connected, um, some, some are not, but that's kind of good. So the full of the area, um, if you're ever south of downtown, go back twenty, that's kind of our older bones, our older communities, traditional neighborhood. Our suburban neighborhoods are lighter yellow, which is Mill Lake, uh, Bay Springs, a lot of the, the development, Augusta Woods, um, the Weatherstone and everything, those are kind of the newer plan, plan developments, those are the latest plan developments that we have. Um, urban village is characterized, uh, it's the orange, and that's really our, kind of our adjacent to downtown, it's more urban, it's more mixed use, there's more commercials in that area, and that's where we like to kind of encourage, uh, traditional neighborhood development with the focal point represented by neighborhood commercial, commercial development. Um, next is the suburban village, and that's what kind of goes around our existing, um, some of our suburban neighborhoods. Um, suburban villages are characterized by clustered commercial development around the intersection of permanent roads, and include immediate surrounding residential areas, which are suburban in nature. Community crossroads, you'll see those with the stars, kind of asterisks, um, and there's about one, two, three, four, five of those over there. And they're characterized by commercial development, um, it emphasizes small scale development that's across the immediate surrounding area. So we'll see one up Tanner area, um, a lot in the, like the, in the paint which is suburban village, those are kind of the crossroads area where like some of our, some of our more, more major intersections are coming, coming together. Um, next, the I-20 gateway is, is exactly what it is, it's development focused along the exits that are found, that run through Villarica, it's twenty-four and twenty-six. Commercial corridors are, again, we'll see the, the community crossroads also intersecting along those areas, those are seventy-eight, sixty-one, one-on-one, um, that's kind of areas that's been traditional for commercial development, and, um, that's the kind of development we like to see along those corridors. Um, downtown, it's basically following what the city has, uh, has indicated. Um, industrial areas are where we have, um, some of our traditional development, but some of our newer warehouse style, so our industrial places. And there, you know, around the corridors that, that can, um, at this time accommodate truck traffic. Um, commercial nodes are throughout the city, medical is, uh, the Tanner area, um, from our zoning map, you can see that that area is slowly turning more and more blue, more and more commercial, less residential. So we envision that that area only gets bigger with time, uh, with the expansion of Tanner and other ancillary medical uses that will come, um, as a result of that Tanner expansion. So this is what our future looks like when we consider the zoning cases. Um, but I like that this plan is done on those character area sheets in it within the plan, it lets you know what zoning districts, um, go along with the, the future development, uh, character areas. Um, so that's helpful for staff, especially when considering application and, um, I think the way it's printed out, it kind of helps you visualize it a lot better, um, than maybe a little bit previously. Um, and so then with that, we have now, we know what a public wants, we know how to map it out, and the last part is to implement it. So this plan is going to carry us to twenty thirty-eight, we'll do five-year checkpoints with, uh, DCA, um, and the implementation guide that's included is, includes ordinances, programs, community improvements or investments, additional plans or studies in the administrative system. This is what they're suggesting that we use in order to implement what we have here. We'll also see a revised community work program, the appendices has our accomplishments that we did from the last, um, update. Um, so with some of the newer things that we want to accomplish this time around, they tell you who's responsible, who they believe is responsible, who you think is the responsible party, if it's going to cost money, or if it's going to be staff time. Um, and so it's up to us at that, after this, after we adopt this, to figure out, you know, what's our low end to include, what can we tackle first, how can we get quick wins, and what's going to take us probably the span of these twenty years to get, to get done and corrected. Um, we'll see a lot of infrastructure projects, you'll see, um, a lot of update your studies, update your plans, update your ordinances. Uh, one thing that's for, for staff in, in planning and zoning is that, well, zoning code updates included in there, so to completely take the zoning portion out of you, you see another separate standalone document. Um, also we're looking at, in that, uh, sign regulations, um, incorporating the Golden Nugget Trail proposed plan into the zoning order so we can get it codified to, um, to make sure that when we're looking at developments in the future, we're also looking at that plan. So coordinating all of the various plans that we have, um, is really what the community work program does, and says that these are the projects that you need to look at, um, over the next five years, and then we'll do it again and again until we run out of things to think of to make Villarica's a city. So that is my spiel regarding our future development, uh, map and comprehensive plan updates. Um, but what we're looking to do here is get you guys to make a recommendation on the adoption of this document and map, um, and it will go to the City Council on October twenty-seventh, um, for adoption, um, and we will transmit it very much so immediately to DCA and three different community commissioners as it has to be, we have to have, we've done this process by the thirty-first of this month.
Okay.
So that's why I had to call you guys back in here, um, to get you, give you an opportunity to look at this and, and, um, and have a poster public hearing for it. Yes, any questions?
Um, so it's a twenty-year plan with updates every five years.
Yes.
Alright. Uh, on the map there, you've got two different shades of gray, it appears to me. Yeah, lighter gray and darker gray. And it's not differentiated anywhere in this presentation material you handed us out, and so...
Okay, so it might be difficult to see as well as that the boundaries for the city are in black, black dash line.
Uh, okay, I do see that.
Um, and the urban growth boundary is kind of in a turquoise line.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I got that, I see, okay.
So, um, what that is, is that this is areas, as we want to grow where we're looking at annexation, that's where we would support it. So it's really that light shade because that's in Carroll County right now, we don't have access to it. But if someone did want to annex or we found an opportunity to annex, the color, the underlying color is what we would designate as, so where the pink is lighter, where the suburban goes where the gray is higher, that's just, we would encourage industrial in those areas.
Got some sort of a future plan growth, um, or, or growth plan, so we can see what, what may be coming and what should go into those areas.
Absolutely.
Um, I had a chance to look at the, the detailed plan today, um, it's overwhelming. I was very impressed with the, the quality of work that they've done. Um, I did notice when you typed on back in the section that talks about schools, that would be one, but, um, just to bring it to somebody's attention. Um, I did very impressive, I had pushed as part of the steering committee for more emphasis on the DDA and Villarica DDA, getting together with, with council. That's touched on in, I don't know if you see some real bold writing about that, it's not there, but, but they did enough of it in there, particularly back in the later sections, there was a lot of comment about DDA and VRDA, so I was pleased, uh, to see that. Um, I would have liked to have seen a lot more emphasis on the need for your sewer. Um, it's, it's discussed, but that's our problem in Villarica, and before we march on with some of these other activities, we've got to solve our sewer plan, and, you know, and I know there's work underway to do that, um, but I would have liked to have seen the comp plan, maybe emphasize it even a little bit more, and it was done. Um, I think they're off on some of their estimates, particularly for the Golden Nugget Trail, they showed four million bars as an estimate for completion, that, um, that's away, I don't know what that's going to cost, but again, that's something yet to be done in the future. And I was also concerned about their lack of discussion about the problems with development, particularly downtown and Norfolk Southern. There's very little discussion here about issues with railroad, and railroad is causing us all kinds of problems and will into the future, and we really don't touch on that in the plan. But the plan is, is excellent, it's well-written, it's well-presented, uh, the real meat of it is back in the appendices and so forth. Um, so I, you know, I, I would see no reason why we wouldn't forward it on to, to the council. I, I don't like, why couldn't we do that tonight, they have many next Tuesday, right? Could they not consider it?
Right, um, and that might have been possible, but, um, the way that it's set up for the two meetings each one is that we have agenda items prepared a week in advance.
Okay, okay.
I got this the day after, the agenda items were due that. Alright, girls, your plan's good, congratulations.
Well, have you seen a copy of it, uh, before?
Absolutely, um, so what, and I'll get with Bobby about how, what's the best format to give them. Um, everything is online, everywhere that's online, um, I sent them links and let them know, that let them know that our plan has been accepted by the DCA. Um, and prior to all this, we had a review, a review and comment period, um, which is what builds up once we've transmitted it, that's what goes on next. So it goes to all of Carroll County and surrounding municipalities, or view just to make sure that nothing is out of whack, or there's nothing that's inconsistent with the overall region. Um, so really since August, this has been kind of been a, in a review phase. Um, but I will get with them to see what the best method is, if they want a hard copy, which is about four, five, four hundred pages or three, I'm not sure, I forget the number. Um, but it's significant, um...
Yeah, it is, it was very well put together compared to what we've had in the past.
Right, and a lot of it's based on what the standards were in two thousand and five versus now, and that's why this one, I think, this, this got to be a little more broad, a little, a lot more, um, I think it's easier to digest, um, it doesn't, comp plans don't get into like, you know, how the sausage gets made, it's just like, if you want to go in with some sausage, we think this is the road to get there.
Yeah.
So very broad, policy-based, um, I think all the things that you've said is, must have been echoed by staff and other citizens that we need to work together more, um, and that's something that has to be just done internally.
Right, right, day-to-day, week-to-week.
We try every day to get it done, we have these plans, we bring them together and make sure that we're, you know, at least following some beacon of guiding light, and that's what this does for us, to kind of get us, hopefully get us all on the same page and encourage just through, I guess, just kinetic energy or the universe that we work together better.
Well, these also, this is what I, I always refer to this plan as the grease to the wheels because it's, um, if somebody wants to put something somewhere and it's on a comprehensive plan, it's a whole lot easier to push it through and, and to convince the citizens that we're not springing this on you, we told you, and it's, you know, posted. It just makes the process a lot smoother i-if a certain project goes somewhere and it matches the comp plan. So I, I liked it. It made sense.
Do you guys want to do public comment after you?
Yes, yes. Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this time, would anyone like to speak in favor of this comp plan, please step forward, give us your name and address, and why you like it? No takers, okay. Would anyone like to step forward and tell us, uh, why you not want this comp plan and why you hate it? We got no haters, okay, so the public section is closed. Uh, any recommendations for staff as far as adoption of the plan and the map?
I mean, we approve the plan as presented and forward it to the council for their consideration.
We have a motion to approve the adoption of the plan and the map as presented, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed? It is approved unanimously. So, let me just go ahead and ask aside for you, if this is the comp plan, what do you call a city's compensation plan?
Pay state.
Okay. Remember I've always been, when you talked about the comp plan, that was...
Oh, compensation?
Yeah, compensation.
You got work for the city.
No, I didn't.
At least in Georgia, I don't know if it's called the same thing in other states. I've, I've only worked here, so I don't know.
Um, can you entertain a couple other comments or at least one? Uh, let's see, uh, well, that park got closed because the staff comments are up next. Well, no, those were staff comments. Oh, no, okay, so we're done up here. Yeah, this is closed, go, okay. Yeah, the City Council being, you can go up there and get a public...
Um, just one last thing, um, we are going to train in October seventeenth in Americas, um, so, um, we're the Marchman, Thomas Flowers, John Hannah Back and myself. Well, I went out to Americas for a day, um, and, uh, had a training session.
Have to work.
They had some, it's, it's, I found this through the Georgia Training Association, which I'm a member of, and they usually do a really good job of, of putting things like this together, I'll be able to look out for more things as they might interest you all.
Like Savannah would be great.
Yes, uh, then, I know, then I have a spring conference, we missed the following that was in Jacksonville for the...
We got a lot more location-wise, you know, I can take a day off for Savannah, take a day off for Americas.
Yeah, yeah, especially Jekyll or Savannah, I'd be happy to go.
Savannah's a good one.
Brass Town.
But, uh, that's, that's all, Tracy's been working all night, we did everything, split away for us to attend that, I appreciate it, so, uh, but that is all I have the updates until...
Okay, before you go, you understand, comments, when you mentioned about the new guideline there about conversations directly with applicants?
Um, to come to staff's attention that some of you may have been, um, contacted by, by an applicant of a guy that has in their case, um, and while it's, uh, we spoke to our legal counsel about it, it's not illegal, it's just generally frowned upon and inappropriate, um, that he, that they solicit you individually, um, which means they have an opportunity to influence you prior to you actually having a case physically in your hands. And, and that's unfair to all other applicants that you're going to abide by a process and not compromise its integrity. So if anyone's reached out to you, or you're thinking of reaching out to them, please don't, if they reach out to you, please let us know, um, and whatever questions you might have about any case, please let staff know, we'll let, we'll let, uh, we'll contact applicants or do whatever we need to get the answer for you. Um, but we prefer that all deliberations go on in, in the public setting so that, um, we're not, uh, painted as doing something inappropriate or illegal, or just, just not, not right on someone else's advice.
Okay. Was it, I won't say the name, but was, did it start with doctor? Yes, okay. Um, you could even throw in that as the chairman, that, you know, we discussed it here, blah, 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 and he is not to contact anyone on, on our board, all these, uh, city contacts, he can talk to us at the public meeting, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
So you can add my two cents to that, because I, I tried to be nice many, many years ago, tried, and, and no, it just, it drives you crazy.
Or you've never been nice.
I am, I am. Is that why you are what you are now? I was voting, I was voting most... Because I was voted the most congenial 38 years ago.
I am dying.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to let them know that I've spoken with you all and with our legal counsel and just advise them to, he needs to stop, anyone talk to staff in a very nice way.
A very nice person.
I'll let you handle that.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, next up, public comments. Anybody like to get up here and say what they want to say and please give us your name and address and tell us what's on your mind.
John Mount, 214 North Marrow Road. I've been to city council twice about this, really, really bothered me, I did a public record search, sent that pin number to three, Rex Camp, one of the downtown businesses.
Hey, John, just speaking right.
So Rex Camp, one of the downtown businesses, put in a request to do a reconstruction of his awning that rusted off the side of his building and he was told by the historical society in downtown that needed to be a fabric awning and that it needed to meet the new standards and so that was voted on by, I think, everybody and approved and then it got to city council and with the vote by the mayor, it got turned down and he was able to put a metal awning back up. And then to make matters worse, I did a public record request for the blueprints and the zoning permit for the rest building permit that he put in. So this is his blueprint for the awning that hangs out over the public sidewalk and that's, that is the only drawing he has. Now, if you go down there and look at it, it is not built to code, there's no metal races, nothing on any kind of center, it looks like a five foot stretch across there. He does mention that it's, there's some more drawings, what accurate photo of the building. He did talk about it's 147 foot long but made out of sheeted lumber, but to me, that should be made, should be taken down and then the other thing I got at the city request is that the city bypassed the fee for the building permit, he didn't have to pay a fee for it. Hopefully this, I don't know if it was pressured from the council, the politician in the city or what, but if you want a future that looks like this, you don't have to have a city that enforces the zoning law. And like I said, I've been to two public meetings, I haven't heard back from the city, they don't seem to be concerned about it, he's still boarding on it and like I say, it hangs out over a public sidewalk, you think it'd be more concern than less. I had to submit drawings for a deck on a boarding island or a house and I had to have all kind of detail, I had to show the spacings on all my runners and what kind of metal factors I was using and I had this deck code that I had to meet. I see none of that from this guy. It sounded like it was going to build a two-story house and I submitted this for a plan. So it, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's just wrong and it's, the timing of future of the city is not going to look like this, but it's going to look like, I guess, what the timings of the politician want it to look like and how much money they want to spend, so. I know that you, I was on the planning and planning board, I know you have, just a recommending board, but I just hope that, you know, we will kind of help look at this and make sure that staff and the city planners and the council people are following the rules. And when you volunteer for a board like this and you say you want cloth awning and everybody agrees and they do studies and thousands of people putting their, you know, opinion, that matters, that somebody actually cares that it's done right, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ms. Lyons, what recourse do we have, anything?
Uh, recourse in regards to.
And trying to address this issue in which he speaks of.
Um, to my knowledge, it's, it's the, the, the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission was completely overturned. So what he proposed and wanted to do is what is being allowed for him to do. After his complaint, it will be inspected.
And that'll be the building code and everything to see if it's up?
To see if it meets, it meets the standards.
Okay. And the fact that it doesn't meet what was approved upon as acceptable in every other situation, but that unique situation doesn't hold any weight since they've already voted on it?
Um, but as a part of the law, the ordinance for historic preservation, if, if an applicant or someone disagrees with the ruling of any board, they have the right to appeal it to city council. And when city council makes this ruling, the next step would be court if someone wanted to take up that challenge. But if city council voted to overturn the ruling, the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission, as staff were obligated to follow what they voted for.
Okay, so it's all city council that has to do it, because we can't do anything about it at this level?
Um, I'm not aware of any recourse from this, from this, from where we sit at this point.
Okay.
I can follow the line.
Thank you.
Some of the things like we've considered before with groups, doesn't matter what we say.
Well, I didn't know if there was recourse or we could bring it back to their attention or we could put the support behind ours saying that we support him, I mean, does that not make a difference? Can we not make a movement to say that we do or do not agree that this should be relooked at by city council or?
Under public comments, you can't because it's not a part of our process as far as what we decide on and what have you. We can as individuals, but not as a board with this unless we bring it up, discuss it, you know, vote on it, but not as a reaction to public comments. But if we bring it up like at the next meeting as something to discuss, then I think that's more.
As a discussion point?
Yeah, but not as a response to public comments because we are just a recommending board to.
But we can't recommend on public comment on something that's going to be looked at at the city council?
I don't know.
We'd have to talk to our city manager and local council about the best way to pursue.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just talking about like procedures because usually public comment, well, not usually, public comments are strictly comments, we listen and then we can act separately but not as a direct response right then and there.
Which is what happens at the council meeting as well.
Exactly. So, okay. Anyone else for public comments?
Um, currently, I guess, there was always the option of taking the issue to court.
Yes. Yep. Okay, so public comments are closed. Uh, next up is adjournment. You have a motion to adjourn? So.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor raise the right hand. All opposed? We're adjourned.